Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 13th meeting of the Dudley Planning Board. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and ask everyone to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the his will, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. New business. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The minutes of the last meeting have not been written yet, so we'll take that up at the next meeting. So we'll move right to the next item on the agenda, which is an A&R applicant, Virginia DiDonato of Ten Jesse Road. Ms. DiDonato, if you don't mind, could you just come up and sit at one of these chairs here?
We've got a sign-in sheet here, Mr. Chairman.
Brayden.
They're on the pub right there.
Okay. Oh, all right. We've got a sign-in sheet you can sign after, before you walk away. But we just kind of want to, we just want to get, hear from you firsthand exactly what the purpose is, the reason why you want to split the lots the way you're doing it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well...
Brayden, if you could bring the plans over so we can just look at them while she's...
That would be great. I've got the small version.
Thank you.
It's the Mylar.
Do you want to show them? Is it written next to each other?
Yeah, you don't have to zoom in.
And the, well, I'm looking, okay?
Yep.
I'm looking to add behind lots four and five, the property on which my house is built, I'm looking to add the 116, I think, square yards or feet, I don't know now. And these were five lots that Leo DiDonato, he had bought all of this and the five lots, he subdivided the lots, and he kept the back. And one of those things that goes on...
Did you just add a list of...
...and gets ignored because it didn't seem that important. But in his estate, it's left, as you can see, it's been signed, for that property behind my lots, excuse my voice, to be added to my house lots. Now, if you look in the top, I believe in the top right-hand corner...
Yeah.
...where the surveyor has made note of what we want to accomplish.
Okay. Yep, it says here, "Parcell A is to be conveyed to lots four and five to become an undivided part of lots four and five." And this is not to be considered a separate building lot, which makes sense because there's no frontage for that lot.
There's no frontage, right.
So, one question I had when I looked at this, when you brought the application in initially, the front lot with the house is being called lots four and five, but there's no, there's no boundary line shown between four and five. What happened there? Why are we calling it four and five if it's just one lot?
Because they were, I'm calling it four and five because I see it on this plan, but it's just one house lot as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like one house lot to me.
There is a divided line on this sheet of paper.
Can I see that?
Sure.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, thank you. See, I can't imagine...
Yeah, there's a faint line there.
I'm just looking to put things in order.
Yep, there it is.
There is a faint line.
Yeah. So, my suspicion is that what happened here was that originally there was two separate lots before the house was built.
Correct.
And then at some point, somebody decided to build a house, and because the house is larger, they decided to take up the two lots. And by statute, because it's been...
1974.
...not used as a separate lot so long, the state starts to just consider it as one lot. So I think that's why your surveyor is calling it four and five.
If I may?
Yes.
The assessor assesses it as one piece of land.
Yep.
I mean, the two lots, kind of never thought of it. I'm noting it, two lots, thinking, "Why, why was this this way with the property?"
Sure.
Because it doesn't go far beyond my, you know, what I deemed.
So...
Anyway, it's just because it was never taken care of.
You see, you see the dotted line, see where he said four and five? I think that's where he got the numbers from. He's using the parcel ID numbers here. You all set? Okay. All right, do you guys want to tickle it?
Assess the one lot that he said, right?
I'm sorry.
Assess for only one?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, might be...
Thank you.
Might be recorded correctly as one lot. If this adds an assessor's one.
So what's the board's pleasure? Does anybody have any more questions for Mrs. DiDonato, or...
Oh.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion regarding this A&R request?
Chairman, I approve the A&R request as submitted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. Seconded by Mr. Chinaki.
Waivers first?
Oh, I'm sorry, she did. Yep, I forgot. She did have a waiver. Let's see. A&R. So, Form A looks good. And we've got waiver. We've got a waiver for number four, digital submission of all plans and documents on a thumb driver via email. And we also have a waiver under 5B, the A&R name, boundaries, north point, and date scale. We request one inch equals 40 feet, and this plan is one inch equals 30 feet. And then G doesn't apply because it's not a buildable lot, and a waiver for H, a profile of the existing grades of the proposed access to the lot. We all know that area pretty well, Jesse Road, it's pretty flat going in there, and there's an existing house there, it's the yard.
There's no access to the lot either.
Yeah, that's a good point. But once it's added to this, technically it will be, so... All right, so entertain a motion for granting these waivers?
So we'll...
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to grant the waivers and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Now, Mr. Clark.
All right. Motion stands. Mr. Chairman, I approve the A&R plan as presented by Mr. Jesus DiDonato.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Chinaki, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So as simple as that, you're all set. We're going to just sign some documents for you and give them back to you, and then you go record that at the Registry of Deeds in Worcester and...
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I needed to know, what's my next step. Now, do I, is there anything else to me tonight?
Yes.
Oh, great.
You have a black sharpie? Look at that, a black sharpie. I do have, oh, thank goodness. I remember one night...
Oh, it would have been a showstopper.
One night we had no black sharpie, couldn't find one in any office.
Oh, well-prepared this is.
Yeah.
We got one more copy. We need two paper or one?
Two paper.
Two paper.
One Mylar.
Two paper or one Mylar. Hold that one down. We got one more paper over there, Mr. Chinaki.
Do you sit the Mylar?
Oh, yes.
Sit the Mylar.
Did you guys sign one of those paper ones already?
One of those over here, yeah.
Okay. She got to sign one over there. Yep, we got one.
Oh, I got a sign-in.
Yeah, but she gave us three, so that's why.
Oh, here you go. Dave's got one. You never go to court with anyone who's...
No.
Gosh, she only needs the Mylar, right?
She only needs the Mylar.
Okay, and we can give her the one unsigned?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
We'll give you back the actual one. We just keep this inside.
Okay, very good. I don't know who else needs to sign.
Yeah, you can just leave that there for people to come up.
Okay. Yep, oh, okay.
Are you keeping those?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Good luck and... I appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion about water runoff. Mr. and Mrs. Billis, 37 Sawmill Road. At this time, I will temporarily recuse myself from proceedings.
I'm in charge.
You're in charge.
Dave's up.
Come on up, sign in. Let's hear a little bit about the runoff problem.
Hello, my name is John Billis. I live on Sawmill Road. I appeared before the board maybe a month and a half ago about the water. I wasn't slated. We scheduled a date. Unfortunately, my wife had some issues with her knee, so I apologize for not making that one, and thank you for slating me tonight. Since all of this runoff and everything, I had a chance to talk to the engineer and to Steve. It's probably about an 85% improvement. I want to say 85 because the 15 has nothing to do with the rain gardens. They did the removal of the sill and the landscaping, and we haven't had an issue in that aspect. My neighbor, his gut is pointing at my house, and him and I have already straightened out what we're going to do to fix it. So it's not the board's issue, it's basically me and my neighbor. I have to town-talk to the highway department about the burn from the side of the road, kind of got flattened over the years. They've done it before, they'll build it back up just so the water keeps running down and doesn't go into my driveway, but that's a minor problem. Like I said, quite happy with the way things happened. Obviously, we didn't have that tremendous downpour that we did in the beginning of the year, but we did have some rain, and there was nothing. My yard was fine, so I'm quite happy. Everything that they said that was going to work has worked, so I have no complaints whatsoever.
What was the date that they came and redid the rain garden, do you remember?
I would say the, not last meeting, the meeting before that I was here, that I wasn't slated, but I stood up and talked. It was within seven to 10 days of that meeting, like they said they were going to do. It was done in that timely manner. You know, they said they was going to be working on that week, and the meeting was a Wednesday, they might have been there on Monday or Tuesday, you know, something like that. It was done fairly quickly. When they cleaned the sill, I understood what they were talking about, and then they laid the rocks and the mulch, and it very, looks very nice, but there was no runoff at all in the water. The only runoff I had was a little from my neighbor and the driveway at the end, which is from the town running down that little hill, so...
So when you say the town's going to do the burn, you're talking about on Sawmill, right?
Yep. It was one year, they did it several years ago, but after several years of plowing, kind of wears down, maybe just needs a little upgrade. You can still see it kind of there, but, you know, and I'll call the highway department, I guess, on that. I believe that's what they do.
Through the chair, Mr. Billis, would you then say that it's your assessment that the situation is resolved?
Yes, it is. Very happy with the way it's resolved, yes.
And what happens if you have a problem in the spring?
I hope I don't.
Hundred-year storm coming?
Yeah. We had that downpour, it was three weeks ago, four weeks ago.
Yeah, we have pictures of it, actually.
Yeah, and there was nothing at all in my yard, you know? It was basically in the front of the driveway with the mulch that came from my neighbor's downspout, not from the back where the cul-de-sac and all that. It was dry back there, so...
When you say your neighbor, you mean the first house on the...
Yes.
And that's your house, I take it?
That's the rain guard.
Yes, yes. Mm-hmm. That's the rain guard, and that's my house, and that's where the port was coming down, and there was another rain guard, and he had to hit the back. So I had no rain, no water coming from either one of these two at that time, from that last one.
Well, that was like one day of rain, one night of rain, those pictures. That's why I'm kind of worried...
Okay.
...about what happens in the spring when it keeps raining and raining and raining, when they're going to fill up like that.
I wish I could answer that question.
Me too.
But it obviously didn't come in my property at that time, so unless something dramatically changes or we get one of those rains like we did in the beginning of the year, I couldn't tell you what would happen, you know?
Anybody else, Sky? Nothing?
If he's happy.
At this point, I mean, I can't...
Well, as of now...
As of now, it's working great, so, you know, hopefully it just gets better. I'm hoping.
Let's see, the developer in the back, do we have a timeline of the completion? If you don't mind me saying, timeline of completion. Like, when's the project going to be completed?
Like, I also know the next item on the agenda, I don't know if you want me to answer that now or coming next?
Now, we're going to talk about it. Okay, that's fine. We'll just wait. So, anybody else got anything else? Nothing?
Well, it seems that the only issue remaining is what you have found, which hopefully will be done reasonably soon, and they're taking care of that. Everything is go.
Right now.
We already have our information, so if anything pops up, just send...
Yes.
Is it Brayden? Brayden? Yep. Send Brayden an email.
Okay.
For conservation.
Chairman, I would just thank Mr. Billis for his diligence and coming before the board and...
And I want to thank the board.
...work well and...
In time, yeah. Everything's working well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time. Next up, Sophie's Way, Sawmill Road, LLC engineer Zachary Glass requests for a reduction in surety amount.
So, for the record, my name is Zachary Glass. I'm from Existing Grade, representing the applicant, Sawmill Road LLC, for the request for the reduction in the surety amount of the project. There has been some inspections that have been done recently. I know Mr. Walsh of Graves Engineering has released a couple of reports to the board as well as an email with his findings of theirs, more or less stating that everything is within substantial compliance to the design plans. So we're, the purpose of being here this evening again is to request a reduction in the held sureties. I believe there's 63,000 left, and Mr. Walsh had requested 4,000 to be kept in retainage at this point to cover the final as-built, as any final site cleanup that would be done, you know, within that time, and clean up any sort of lumen seed that may still need it. But the majority of the roadway is done, it's been final paved, inspected, all of the drainage features, they're installed and they're functioning as intended. And so that's kind of just the gist of why we're here, and the request for the reduction.
Comments, questions from the planning board? I got one. How long do you think it'll take to do the final cleanup and the as-built?
So the as-built is currently underway. I'd imagine that's going to be done within a week or two. I can't speak on behalf of the surveyor, it's Joe LeBeck, he's doing that, but he's already been out there, done his field works, I know he's drafting the plan right now to submit to the board. And then the final cleanup, I mean, I'd imagine within a couple of weeks, this is going to be all done, and the construction of the individual lots is a separate portion of this project, so we're not really in charge of the development of those lots, but as for the roadway and the drainage and the cleanup, it's all right there.
Is there one more lot to be built on over there?
Yes, it would be on the right when you first come in, I believe, that is the remaining vacant lot of the Sophie's Way subdivision, but I don't know the intent of that. Again, that's, that would be under private contract with the owner and for them to do their own site plans.
That one's an A&R though, isn't it?
The one when you first pull in on the right, there's the vacant lot with the woods up there. I can't, I wish I had a better answer than I can recall, but I don't know...
The A&R's on the left? Yep, the first one?
The first one on the left was the portion of the A&R, the one on the right was the remaining lot within the subdivision, the definitive subdivision.
And what happens if this guy comes back in the spring and complains about the runoff? Are we going to be stuck with it? With the whole road?
The town doesn't own the detention basis, it's a private way, it's the homeowners that are in charge of that.
The homeowner's going to be responsible?
The homeowners are going to be responsible for it.
So if this guy comes back, we're going to point the finger at five homeowners?
Who owns it? That's the homeowners association.
Not only homeowners, but they'll be his neighbors.
Is there an actual homeowners association?
Yeah, is there an actual homeowners association?
I would have to speak with...
Because I think that was the agreement, that they were going to cover plowing and everything else.
It's Deed, when you buy the property, that you're...
Yeah, but do you have it on paper in front of you, guy?
You're the owner of the, of the road, so you've got to take care of it.
No, because it should be surveyed to the center of the road.
Got it. So there is a private maintenance agreement that has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds and was approved through the board, so there's not a homeowners association that was created with the subdivision, but there is a maintenance agreement.
That was created through this board?
Yeah.
It was approved of the covenant at one point.
It was approved through the...
We got rid of the covenant, and it became, it became a surety, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Separate document, it was called Private Way Maintenance Agreement.
Can we see a copy of that? Do you have that copy?
I'll pull it up from the Registry of Deeds on my phone, and then you guys can look at it.
And that's going to cover plowing and everything?
I know it's ancient history, but it's, it's, basically, it explains how it's evenly divided amongst the five lot owners all across the maintenance, including snowplow.
What'd you call it again?
Private Way Maintenance Agreement. Private Way Maintenance Agreement.
There's multiple ways to do it.
Right. There's also a stormwater maintenance plan that is also included at the way street.
And that goes to the five homeowners?
These are all tied into the deeds of the individual lots.
Any other questions?
Do you want to have any other questions? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Let's see, what agreement?
Well, are we pending information, Mr. Chairman, or are we prepared to move forward with a motion at this time, do you think?
Pending information.
Just waiting for the leak in.
Now, can I ask you about a planning, did you guys get an email? Says Dudley Planning Board will be notified of site visit.
We were notified of the site visit until I sent an email to Graves, by the way, just there where, we didn't have any of this information yesterday. I sent Graves an email, maybe Monday, Monday night, and he sent all this stuff today, correct?
Yeah, I didn't even have a chance to read half of it.
Well, we have a letter here that's dated August 5th. I don't know whether it was in the mail and didn't receive, wasn't received until today, that's entirely possible.
I hate how the registry website looks on your phone, it's very hard to see, but it's a declaration of access and utility, he's been private way maintenance agreement, Sophie's Way, Dudley, Mass. Of course, it won't let me scroll down.
We got rid of the covenant, and it became, it became a surety, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Separate document, it was called Private Way Maintenance Agreement.
Can we see a copy of that? Do you have that copy?
I'll pull up from the registry deeds on my phone, and then you guys can look at it.
And that's gonna cover plowing and everything?
I know it's ancient history, but it's, it's, basically, it explains how it's evenly divided amongst the five lot owners, all across the maintenance, including snowplow.
What'd you call it again?
Private Way Maintenance Agreement.
There's multiple ways to do it.
As long as it's been done, there's also a stormwater maintenance plan, there's also a quarter of the way street.
And that goes to the five homeowners?
These are all tied into the deeds of the individual lots.
Any other questions?
Anyone have any other questions? Does anyone wanna make a motion?
Well, let's see, what's the agreement?
Well, are we pending information, Mr. Chairman, or are we prepared to move forward with a motion at this time, do you think?
Pending information. Now, can I ask you about a planning, did you guys get an email, says Dudley Planning Board will be notified of site visit?
We were notified of the site visit until I sent an email to Graves, by the way, just to be aware. We didn't have any of this information yesterday, I sent Graves an email, maybe Monday, Monday night, and he sent all this stuff today, correct?
Yeah, I didn't even have a chance to read half of it.
Well, we have a letter here that's dated August 5th, I don't know whether it was in the mail, it didn't receive, wasn't received until today, that's entirely possible.
I hate how the registry website looks on your phone, it's very hard to see. But it's a declaration of access and utility, he's been Private Way Maintenance Agreement, Sophie's Way, Dudley Mass. Of course, it won't let me scroll down. Goes on, talks about for the benefits.
For the next meeting, I don't think we're all gonna sit here and look at your phone.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it's an issue.
It was approved by the board previously, if we didn't have all such, if we didn't all have such short memories.
But I remember, Mr. Petrov, you coming to us with a covenant, and then we leave, getting rid of that covenant, and coming to us with a surety. So, there was no, we did not sign off on anything that I remember, that I recall.
Yeah, I didn't sign off on no maintenance agreement or nothing. I don't know how it was recorded.
We'd be doing it the hard way.
Oh, the hard way of doing it. And plus, I didn't get this Graves until today.
I'll accept the motion, does anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, table, it's for next meeting.
Is that a motion?
Motion table for next meeting.
On releasing the surety?
We have the document right here, if anybody wants to read it.
Because you want the documents that he's got filed at the registry deeds?
Yeah, I wanna see what they say.
Chairman, I don't hear a second, I think that motion fails.
All right.
Do I hear another motion?
All right, I can make a motion that we grant the requested reduction, and, there it is.
I would second that motion, based on the Graves letter that we received, that says everything is done, and that's what he's recommending, so, we always usually go by the recommendation of our consulting town engineer.
Yeah, but he sent that last minute.
Well, he sent it August 5th, the letter's dated August 5th, he's.
Yeah, what did you get, your email?
No, they actually, hard copy it, if you look at the date, it says August 5th.
Yeah, what was the email?
He is what?
What was the email?
The thirteenth, that's eight days.
Exactly.
And we meet once a month.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. Motion for hills.
Tie, so the vice chairman would have to not be counted.
How's that?
They have its rules of regulation, if you have.
Vice chairman would not be counted.
If you have a tie, the acting chairman does not, vote does not count.
Okay, huh?
Yep.
Want to look that one up?
That's how it goes.
All right, the motion passes.
We're following rabbit rules.
Want to look that one up?
All right.
Wasn't the guy who ordered, the motion passes?
I thought, I thought when Ores said it's tied, it fails.
In terms of a tie, that's what's supposed to happen.
Yeah.
The chairman, chairman or acting chairman has to step in.
Flip the coin.
Want to look that one up?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would thank the gentleman for his time, and the information provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're signed in, Zachary?
Yeah, I second, yeah, thank you.
Accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Jane Wirick, am I saying that right, Wirick?
Yes.
Do you have that gonna need to be plugged in, or?
Uh, if they want to show it on, uh.
Screens?
Cable?
We have very capable.
She should just have to plug it in.
Oh, okay, we're ready to light you up.
Is this remote?
No, that just gets plugged into your laptop, and then you run your laptop.
Okay.
Will you plug it in?
Yep. Just cut in, plug in elsewhere.
On the box?
There you go.
Technology is wonderful.
When it works.
When it works. There isn't that fact, definitely. Oh, pictures.
Already published, huh?
Uh, yeah, already, yeah. That's from Massachusetts only, right?
No, it was, uh, the, uh, how would you book? I would say it was published. Yeah.
Is your laptop on?
Great housing somewhere.
Is it on? Just went to sleep.
This is working.
Self-contained houses, you know?
You'd be living in sheds in your backyard.
Just as a quick note, seven thirty, I rejoin the meeting.
Good evening, Jane Wirick, I'm the Director of Land Houston Zoning with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I'm here to talk to you tonight about accessory dwelling unit bylaw development. We have been very fortunate, the past few years, of getting funding through the state that is called District Local Technical Assistance, or DLTA, for the acronym. And what it is, is it's a pot of money that allows us to provide planning services for the towns in the central Mass region. And it's typically for smaller projects that might not qualify for other types of funding, and with the change in the state law that allows accessory dwelling units by right within certain criteria, within the definition of protected use ADUs. What was I gonna say? Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Anyways, so, we were fortunate to get this type of funding to help several communities within the region. So, ADUs, for people who might not be familiar with it online, it could be within an existing dwelling, it could be attached to an existing dwelling, it could be detached, it could be in a basement. And it could also be above a garage, so there's plenty of different ways that ADUs can be built. The law was passed in August of last year, and went into effect February 2nd of this year. And the regulations for it, that go along with the statute, were finalized in February. And so, state also released a model accessory dwelling unit bylaw that we are using as a model, and then meeting with different communities to customize it for each town's needs. So, the state definition for it is kind of long, it's a self-contained housing unit, inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements, that maintains a separate entrance, either directly from the outside, or through an entry hall, or corridor shared with the principal dwelling, sufficient to meet the requirements of the building and fire code for safe egress. And then, as I mentioned, they can be detached, attached, or internal to the principal dwelling.
Joe, did you prefer questions at the end, or can we go with them as part of the?
At any time, it's fine.
A question regards to sanitary.
Yes.
Water and sewer.
Yes.
In the instance, in the case of a detached unit, how does that work? Is it somebody's gonna have another sewer line that they're gonna have to install, and no water line?
Per state statute, you cannot require separate utility connections for the ADU. If it turns out that that's the only way it can be done, then that might be a consideration, and I think that is in part because you cannot create any undue burdens, like excessive cost for development of an ADU.
So, if an ADU was in a backyard, say?
Yes.
You could have the, you could have one of those sewer ejector pumps, that would, you know, everything would go down into the basement into a containment unit, and then that could be pumped to the main house's sewer system?
That would depend on what the Board of Health approves.
Well, I mean, I, I'm.
I don't know the technical parts of it.
If it's all to code.
Yeah, it has to be to code.
Right, but there's nothing that could, there's nothing that can make the town force the person run a lateral from the street all the way to the backyard?
I don't have enough of the technical details about how that's done.
A separate sewer line.
Okay.
Can't make them run a whole new sewer main, just because they put an ADU in the back.
Correct.
That's it.
Unless they can show that there's no other way to do it.
Further complicate the issue. We have a moratorium currently, regards to sewers. Sounds like a kind of a backdoor, in terms of getting something, another separate dwelling, if you will, with sewer access attached to the primary residence.
Moratorium still applies.
Right, no, I don't think so, you already have, you already have a connection, so it would be the same as if you put an addition on your house and added an additional bed, bedroom and bathroom.
All right.
It's no different.
Which is why the moratorium doesn't make sense, because when you add another bedroom, you're adding more flow.
I guess my interpretation was, a moratorium is no more, this is obviously more.
The moratorium is new connections.
New connections, oh.
That's as far as I know.
Okay.
So, then you're right, it is kind of a backdoor.
Do they allow you to do this on a septic system?
Uh, they do, but you have to meet the Title V requirements for that.
That's it, no square footage of septic?
And if you've already got the main house on a septic system, you would probably need quite a bit of land to have enough room for another whole septic system, just for the ADU.
Well, no, she just said it just.
But most septic systems are built oversized for the, for the application that they're being put into.
Well, sometimes.
But their size to the number of bedrooms in the house, so, if, if it's a four-bedroom septic system, and all of a sudden you add an ADU.
But some houses that built, some houses that build a four-bedroom septic sys, some houses that are built, some four-bedroom houses that are built have five-bedroom septic systems built.
And I guess to her point, it's more of a Board of Health problem than it is.
Yeah, the statute says it does not supersede any building code, fire code, Board of Health, Title V.
It's just gotta fit.
Other requirements.
If it fits, it goes.
Correct. Any more questions before we move on? So, there are some things that towns do have a say in, you can limit the number of accessory dwelling units on a lot. What the state is calling the one that's allowed by right is a protected use ADU, protected use because it comes under Chapter forty A of the zoning act, Chapter Section three, which is under the Dover Amendment, so it's protected like agricultural uses, educational, institutional uses, et cetera. But it has to meet certain requirements, if a community wants to allow larger ones, they, they can be more permissive. If you want to allow additional ones, you can do that. Technically, you don't have to have a bylaw, but if somebody came in with a building permit application for an ADU, and it was denied, it could open up the town to legal issues. Because, right now, you have to abide by what the state law says. So, we find that communities are wanting the bylaw because there are certain things that they want to, you know, have a little bit of say in, such as how many ADUs would be allowed on a lot. Whether they can be used as short-term rentals, whether you require site plan review, which I would not recommend unless you require that for a single-family residence. Because it needs to be reasonable restrictions, and it can't be more restrictive than what you would require for a single-family.
What if the town wanted to say, okay, we understand by right, you could put one ADU in. But, if you are willing to go through a special permit, we might let you do two ADUs.
Uh, so the, the state does allow, if you want to go larger, or you want additional ones, it would be by special permit.
Okay. Because everybody's situation is different, you might have somebody who has a three-acre lot.
Yeah, I was on a, a remote meeting with the state today, and I know one town said that they were looking at doing by right for the protected use, and not allowing short-term rentals in the protected use, but if there was another one, and a larger one, they would allow that one to be a short-term rental.
Really? Any idea what the reasoning would be behind that?
Well, most communities don't want ADUs to be short-term rentals, just because the purpose of this law is to provide more housing units in general for long-term housing, so it's not helping your long-term housing stock if you're allowing it to be a short-term rental. We did another study a couple of years ago, and within CMRPC, and some students at Clark University. At that time, it showed that there was only an impact to long-term housing in Worcester with short-term rentals, not in other smaller towns.
So, by, by them making the allowance for it to be a short-term rental only on the second ADU, and since the second ADU has to go through special permit process. That's how you, they get to vet the.
Correct.
The property.
And we have other communities in the western part of the region, more rural communities, that don't have much of a commercial tax base. And so, they're in favor of short-term rentals, they don't see the housing as being as big of an issue. I think maybe with pricing, people might start moving further west, but it gives the community an opportunity to bring in some local room occupancy tax.
So, this would be probably like the Berkshires, where they have more outdoors types, people that would want to visit on a short term? They would get a short-term rental out there, that makes sense?
Yeah. On the other hand, places like the Cape and Islands, there are so many short-term rentals that it does impact the local long-term housing supply. And the other thing that communities can regulate is the number of curb cuts, you can require, if it's a concern, there are too many turning movements in and out, too many curb cuts. You can require the ADU to use the existing driveway. Not for what you can't do. You cannot require owner occupancy, you cannot restrict occupancy to a certain age group, you cannot require units to be designated as affordable housing. The parking requirement for the statute is that if an ADU is located within a half mile of a transit station, which they include bus stop on that, you cannot require a parking space for it. If it's more than a half mile, you can require one.
So, the, our rule of one and a half, one and a half spaces per unit, doesn't apply to ADUs?
No, and that would, and I, I did pull up your zoning bylaws, I'll have to go through it, we're finding that with some communities, they're saying, okay, this is just subject to our use regulations, but then the use regulations say only one structure per, only one dwelling unit per lot, so, you need to start adding accessory dwelling in it to your use table, and make sure that there's no conflict with other parts of your bylaws.
So, if I have a three-acre lot, how many of these little houses can I fit?
Depends on, depends on, what if you have a three-acre lot that's a hundred feet wide and four hundred feet deep, that would be different than if you had. So, that's why, once you go above one by right ADU, that's when you get the special permit, and your neighbors get to come in.
If the town so chooses to, allow more than one.
Right. The by right one is the state.
Yes.
But we could forge ahead and say, well, maybe we'd allow two, if you, what was that?
Put twenty of these things on a property?
Well, no, I mean, within reason, I think that's why you have, that's why you go through the special permit process, and you have a public hearing, and you're bothered to notify, and they get to know that you're planning on putting in, you know, two little houses behind your house, they get their say.
Right.
So.
I don't see like a weapon or anything on this.
The permit is through the planning board, or through the ZVA?
Uh, you can determine that in your bylaw, most, most communities are doing it with the planning board.
I thought we already had a, you guys were already working on a bylaw for us for this.
Well, we're working on.
A short-term rental.
Yeah, remember that one, the selectmen didn't want that for some reason.
Well, that, that tells you what you wanna do for your ADUs then.
But what we're doing now is, we're talking about, you're working with several communities.
Yes.
To come with one cohesive.
No, 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 each community.
This is the Dudley.
Each community gets to make your own decisions on the areas that they let you choose.
Gotcha, but we can, we can look at like the draft that you provided us for, what was it, OCAM, or? Provided a.
Oh, was it the OCAM one I sent, okay.
It was one of them, but we can look at that, we can fine tune it to what we think is.
Correct, and I've included several comments in the margin, where you have a choice, where you don't. We, I'd also be looking at your existing bylaws to find the most appropriate place to put it, and maybe offer a couple of options on where you think it might fit best in the zoning bylaws.
So, we could hash something out. So we could hash something out and set a public hearing and.
Correct.
Right, okay.
This looks like a great project for our new town planner.
I was wondering if this is a new town planner.
What side?
I'm just a clerk.
You're a clerk, okay. Do you have a new town planner?
Could add some more digits to the salary.
Maybe I'll start taking night classes.
I am.
Oh, okay.
All right.
And so the last thing, you can't restrict, you can't require a special permit for the protected use ADU. You can also have reasonable restrictions such as setbacks, bulk and height restrictions, and particularly for historic districts, you can have design standards, but they have to be clear and objective. They can't just say something vague like, fits into the character of the neighborhood. You have to say, you know, you need a certain pitch roof, or you need an overhang, or, you know, so many windows on the facade, you know, are they symmetrical, like a traditional home?
So that's a good question there. Would the by right ADU still be subject to the same side and rear and front setback rules for the lot? Or are they, because I remember when they talked about, one of the things with ADUs was that it wasn't going to be subject to all of these zoning rules.
It would be whatever's consistent with the single family.
Right, okay, so if you've got.
There can't be more restrictive.
If your address is 15 and you need 15 feet off the sideline, then your ADU has to be 15 feet off the sideline.
Right.
Makes sense, okay. Because some people, I think, misunderstood the bylaw and thought that the, thought that the state regulations somehow like made it easier, that they could get around all kinds of different zoning rules, even basic ones like setbacks and.
The area that is still a little gray is the area on pre-existing non-conforming lots or properties, structures. There are some areas where I've heard feedback that you'd still have to allow it on a non-conforming lot, but if it can't meet setbacks, then how can you do that? So that's something we need to look into a little further.
Yeah, we, our previous town planner, she asked some questions to our town council about ADUs and, because we had somebody come in and they wanted to do something here in town in a different situation, and she ended up leaving us like she planned on leaving, so not her fault. Ran out of time, so by the time the answers came back, they came back to me and I had a back and forth with the town council and I was surprised that a couple of the things that she said, for instance, this particular person had a existing two-family in a business 15 zone, and they had a garage in the back and they wanted to try and convert that into another two-family. But we have a bylaw in town that says you can't put two dwellings on one lot anywhere in town.
Mm-hmm.
But then we said, but then we've got the ADU thing. So we said what you could do, our understanding would be you could potentially turn the garage into a single ADU, provided it met all the stipulations of the size of an ADU. So then the question became, could you do an ADU in business 15? And this is what town council said. She said, as to ADUs, the EO HLC ADU defined, quote, "single-family residential zoning district" as, quote, "any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are a permitted or an allowable use," including any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are allowed as of right or by special permit. So what she said was, if you're allowed to have a single family built in biz 15, by that rationale, that means you can have an ADU.
Correct.
But then it got into the question of, what if there was an existing commercial business on the business 15 lot? And that's where.
And no principal dwelling?
Yeah, no, no, no parent dwelling, no mother dwelling, so to speak, for the ADU. And then that's when she said, unless it was zoned for mixed use.
Ah, okay.
So it gets a little interesting. And then also the question of a two-family. Again, because two families are allowed by right in our single-family residential zones, by definition, she says, you could do an ADU off of an existing two-family.
Yeah, it says multi-family use development.
But then when you get to a three-family, that becomes defined as an apartment complex, and then you can't do an ADU off of a.
Yeah, it says right there, complex.
Yeah.
You can do it.
But is it in a zoning district that allows single family?
It says, single-family duplexes or multi-unit developments.
Well, because in single, in single-family residential zoning, we don't allow three families, we don't allow apartment complexes.
So if I have a two-family, I can put one of these little houses on the side?
That's what, that's what, yeah, that's our understanding of it.
Yeah.
Providing it's, provided it's a two-family in a single-family residential, a zone that allows single-family residential.
What if it's a commercial building? Could you put an accessory dwelling off of the commercial building?
That's where, that's where town council says, town council says no, unless.
Unless there's a principal dwelling unit on the lot.
But it has to be like residential?
Yes.
So I guess if you had a commercial building and it wasn't being used or something else, you could convert it to the primary.
Mm-hmm.
Although, can't think of too many times you'd have a store that you would turn into a house.
So the Attorney General's office has been reviewing a lot of bylaws that were submitted, some of them last fall before the EO HLC, and for those online, it's the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, before they came up with their regulations to go along with the statute. And so a lot of the things that the Attorney General's office is commenting on and disapproving is just terminology. Thing people, a lot of towns were saying, on a lot with a single-family dwelling. Well, no, because you could have a duplex on there, you could have a tenement home. So they want you to use the term principal dwelling now. So by waiting, we're learning from everyone else's mistakes.
Mm-hmm.
And we're able to really scrutinize the language as they are. There's one town that had the definition for gross floor area, but within the body of the bylaw, they just said floor area. And so the Attorney General said, no, it needs to be gross floor area, so we know exactly what you're referring to.
So the email you sent us earlier today.
Yes.
It included this presentation.
Yes.
But then it also included that, that, that one, I think it was OCAM.
The model bylaw.
Yeah, model bylaw. That model bylaw, is that one that was approved by the state already?
That one has a few corrections based on the Attorney General's. It's not the original model.
Gotcha.
So it should have all of the principal dwelling language in it. Moving on.
Could I just ask you on the.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, it's going to come up on this one, sorry.
That's okay.
But my question was, is there a minimum for square footage in these?
Whatever building code requires, if, if there's a requirement.
Okay.
You know, we see studio apartments, how big are they and.
Yeah, that could be 300 square feet or.
Yeah, I think some towns are, you know, wanting to go with 400 and they're doing tiny home bylaws.
I was just going to say tiny homes.
Yeah.
None of those.
So, you know, the size of your lot might, and your setbacks might determine how big of a unit the lot can accommodate.
Right, because I was just looking, like 900 square feet, that could be a three, you know, it's a small three-bedroom house, so.
It could be. So, yes, some of those limitations are, and this is what the state is offering, up to 900 square feet or one-half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. They do allow communities to be more permissive and increase that 900 to something else. Or if you want to keep the protected use at 900, that's fine, and if you want to allow a local ADU, you can go with something higher. And so I don't expect answers tonight, but I did want to talk a bit about what's allowed, what you have some choices on, and maybe go through the draft bylaw and maybe send some comments back to me so I can make some revisions and then come back again to see you with a more finalized copy.
So these are our options, things to consider.
Yes.
Such as they are.
How many do you want to allow? Should they be ST, short-term rentals? Is this yours? I would not recommend site plan review if you don't require it for a single-family. The number of curb cuts or whether you want to establish any design standards for historic districts.
Well, again, site plan reviews, I would recommend site plan review if we end up deciding to allow more than one ADU per lot. Personally, that's the way I.
So maybe not for the protected use, but for the local ADU?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just me, I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that.
More than one is a wide range, I think, over in any direction.
Right, and I think it's, that, that's when it really gets lot-specific.
It gets, gets.
They get crazy in terms of something. I think if you're going to do that, you should put a cap, you know, like more than one, for like two to three, two or a maximum of three would require a site plan review. And I think you got to cap it at some point.
Is that a state maximum?
Yeah.
No, and not at all?
No, but, you know, some communities are considering cottage community bylaws, cottage housing, which, once you start getting into, you know, several ADUs, it's starting to look more like a cottage community to me.
Well, now you're circumventing subdivision regulations, really. At that point, you're creating a little tiny neighborhood on just one big lot.
It could be done on open space, it could be the same as an open space residential subdivision.
Right, but open space residential, we make them go through all of the design work and the engineering and the site plan review and permitting and.
I've seen some cottage communities done as rentals, so it stays on one lot, there's one owner, and they just rent out the units.
It's dangerously close to what sounds like a mobile home park.
It's actually quite darling.
Just better-looking mobile homes.
There's no restriction on bedrooms or anything?
No, that, I guess if you're on septic, that will dictate.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I hope you can have.
Well, like to Guy's point, 900 square feet, I mean, that's.
Small three-bedroom house.
You go, you go, you take basically one floor of any three-decker in Webster, I bet you it's around 700 to 900 square feet.
Yeah, easily.
We just go down Aldea Drive, those houses are all around 900 square feet.
Bedroom apartment, two grand.
As far, you know, other thoughts? Personally, I wouldn't like to see short-term rental. I wouldn't like to see ADUs used as short-term rentals in this town. I don't think it would work.
No. I think what she said makes sense, it's not, it's not helping your housing stock if it's short-term rentals.
Right, right. So in your, in your draft, in your draft here, did you, do you have a restriction, no short-term, yeah, you hear it, 13 short-term rentals.
Do you care if I unplug the?
There you go.
Sure.
Now, how would they assess this for taxes? Or is there even a thing?
That question has come up from one of the town assessors and the response we got from the state was, check with your town's legal counsel.
Oh, yeah?
Well, you saved paper and printed on both sides, I was confused for a second there.
It was for the presentation too, and I don't know why.
Three to 13.
Came out that way.
On the back, okay. So the first part is just definitions.
Yes.
Gross floor area, more than one. Short-term rental defined as. 37 consecutive days or less. So if you have an ADU, you could put a college student in there if you wanted to, because he's going to be there for longer than a month, so technically not a short-term rental.
So would you like us to try to decide on some of these items tonight to give you feedback or?
No, unless you, you know, have the time and want to go through it, we can do that. But I thought I'd give you time to go over it in the next week or so and.
Well, we could give you, well, we, sometimes we get lost in the weeds.
Yeah.
You leave and you're not pushing us. It could die on the vine.
Well, I mean, is there, is there something that, is there something that jumps out at people here that they think that they could make a decision on tonight?
Well, yeah, sure, we could, we could, we could ban the use of ADUs for short-term rental.
Yeah.
That would be like.
Would everybody be in agreement for that?
What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's a sense of the board then.
Want to take a vote on it?
Do you want votes on these or?
No.
Because we're just, this is kind of.
Because it's not your public hearing. This is more like a working session.
Working document we're going to.
Yeah.
So we all just take it, take it home, take it apart, and then next meeting? Yeah, but we can, we can give her some direction that we're not going to probably.
Just a few things that we know for sure.
I mean, I think, you kind of know, we, we work with most of the lots, so I think you kind of know more where anything at anywhere. And how about the, how about the sizing? Would everybody be agreement that we would just stick with the 900 maximum? Because I think that's quite a big accessory use.
Well, I thought it said max 1,200.
Is it 900 max or half of the?
Whichever is larger.
Whichever is smaller.
400 square feet, gross floor area, or one-half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less.
Right, so if you only have a 1,400 square foot home, your ADU can only be 700 square foot.
Right.
Okay.
You have a 4,000 square foot house.
Limit it to 900.
You've got to go to 900. Yeah, the 900 is max.
900 is max.
Yeah.
But they are allowing communities to be more permissive if you want to allow that number to be bigger.
I'll stay with the 900.
I think the 900 is plenty.
I think so.
I would agree.
I would agree.
Okay, so we can, we can at least give you those two options.
No short-term rentals, keep the protected use at 900 square feet max.
And what do we think about allowing more than one ADU on the lot, provided that we have a special permit process for the official ADUs after one?
Yes, I would agree with that, but like I said, I think we need to put a cap on it. Maybe it's not three, maybe it's four, but I mean, I think we need to put a cap, like for two to three or two to four, that, that's all you can do.
I'd even be comfortable capping them at two. You get one by right.
Lot size too, though.
Yeah, you got to think lot size.
Well, that's why you get the special permit. It doesn't matter what lot size it is.
The setbacks.
You can still do the single by right.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a done deal. And then if they come in for a second, they've got to come in for the special permit.
They come in for two.
They come in for two and their lot's 15,000 square feet, we can tell them, probably the building inspector's going to tell them, you can't do it anyways. You, how are you going to fit?
You could do it.
Yeah.
If there's enough.
If you have the side setbacks.
If you've got a house with a detached, if you've got a 15,000 square foot lot.
Yeah.
And a, and a two-car detached garage.
And a garage.
You put one above the garage, you could build one in the backyard, sure, you could do it.
Well, actually, so that's a good question. He said one above the garage. I thought I read something in here about ADUs that, can it be attached to the house?
It can be.
Attached can be detached, can be the garage.
You can convert your garage into an.
The garage, detached.
Right, we call it, we call it the in-law apartment rule, which we supposedly already have here in Dublin.
Yep.
You can, you can do that.
Which you're probably going to have to amend your in-law apartment.
So that we start calling the in-law apartment the first ADU?
Or, yeah, or protected use ADU.
Or just get rid of it altogether and go under the ADU.
What I mean is, if you have a house and you already have an in-law apartment, and then you want to come put an ADU on that lot, should we be counting the in-law apartment as number one ADU and number two triggers the special permit? Or do we say, well, you already add the in-law apartment?
They're going to be grandfathered, it was done under the previous owner.
Okay.
They can get one more.
So if I put up a big garage in my backyard and make three units in one building, that will be allowed?
If we, if we allow.
No.
If we allow three units.
If they're only 900 square foot each unit.
Yeah, but I.
It doesn't, it doesn't say.
That's why, that's why you have to put a cap on how many per lot.
Right.
We'd say two or three.
But if they're in the same building.
And if you put three units in one building, how do you not call that an apartment complex at that point?
Yeah, exactly.
Here's how you could do it. According to this, you could use the basement and the attic and the garage.
Yeah. You know, four.
I think I meant that as an either or.
All right, so.
Just examples.
So, how many would we cap it at?
Let's see, what would you go with, three?
I was thinking three max.
Yeah.
I was thinking two, but I'd go for three because it's gonna have to be reviewed anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, now we go with three.
What do you think, Mr. Derry?
Three?
I don't know, because.
Special permit.
What do you think, Mr. Charky?
Depends on the law.
Right.
And that's what happens, that's why they come in the special permit, they come in, they show us a site plan, and says, oh, look, here, we've got plenty of room, or they come in and they go, yeah, we get this much room, we wanna try and squeeze it in, and we go, oh, wait a minute, or the neighbors tell us, yeah, that ain't gonna work.
I mean, it all, I would think.
Setbacks, and they go get three sheds over here, start flopping them in the yard, you know what I mean? On a friggin' three thousand square foot lot.
If you're gonna connect, like, I think the typical house only has a three or four inch pipe going to the sewer main.
Yeah, I know.
And if you have a house already with three bathrooms, you probably can't add three more bathrooms to your sewer main.
If you have teenagers in the house.
So.
You require a four inch pipe instead of a three inch pipe.
Through the water and sewer department too, to figure out if it's even possible.
Right, right.
That's a good point.
So, I think Mr. Horn said three max, I think that sounds good.
Okay.
But we want a stipulation that after the first one by right, anything after one, number two and number three, by special permit process.
And that's what the state law requires also.
Okay.
That's perfect.
So how can, how can they, how can the state throw that back? Can't say no to that, we're complying with you.
Do you, do you have the state laws by any chance?
So what I can do is.
Can you email them?
I can send you links to the state statute.
No.
The EO HLC regulations that go along with it. I can send you a link to the Attorney General's Office Municipal Law Unit. And when you get to that page, you scroll down and you click or hover over topics, and then you can search by ADUs, and you get to see how the Attorney General's Office has been responding to ADU bylaws in other towns. So you can see what kind of particular things, you don't have to go through them, there's a lot of them.
Do you, I was just gonna ask you, do you know how many towns already have their ADU bylaws in place?
That was my next question.
I, I would guesstimate that the the AG's office has probably reviewed thirty or forty of them, but
Have they been approved?
I don't know if I've seen one that was a hundred percent.
Accepted?
Accepted. Some of it was just, you know, removing the single-family law and saying a lot with a principal dwelling. So some of them are just minor tweaks in terminology that need to change.
Turning to apartments.
There was one community that tried to put a moratorium on ADUs, and Attorney General said no.
You don't even have second access, and yeah.
So they didn't even let them put a moratorium on it?
No, no, cause they're allowed by right.
They're in place since February, so.
Yeah.
Whether you want it or not.
Could even use the language that the town council said, which she said, any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are permitted or in allowable use.
Right.
That way you're not saying, single-family home, or two-family, or whatever you're saying.
So I can send those links tomorrow, and then sometime within the next week, as I finish going through your existing bylaws, I will draft my comments on what kinds of things the state might flag.
Cause we're already into August.
Yeah.
And I noticed you've got a timeline here, you wanna try and wrap this up by November, so we would have to be doing.
November would be ideal for this funding, it needs to be absolutely done by December thirty-first.
Well, we'd have to go to town meeting, right?
No, we, no, that's, we can do that with just a public hearing, right?
Both.
It's a zoning, it's a zoning bylaw, you can't, you gotta go to town meeting.
So that's October.
How the hell are we gonna do that, Todd?
So it would have to be through the October town meeting, we'd have to do this?
No, 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 you could do it in the spring if you want.
You said by December thirty-first.
No, 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 that's just the end of the contract we have for the funding.
Okay, okay.
So what we would do is.
So our, our goal would be to have something effectively in place, or agreed to by December thirty-first, or sooner than.
Then you can go forward to public hearing.
I thought like we had to have this already written, state for approval by.
Yeah, no, the funding is, is just good for the calendar year.
Oh, good, all right, great.
That gives us a little leeway. But we, only a couple things we left in the dressing, one of them would be curb cuts.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I.
We already allow two per, per lot.
Oh, okay, well, that's it then.
So.
Well, you got state highway too.
But I would say no more than two, right? If, if they wanna put a second ADU in the back, so it's three.
Well, I mean, if you needed a third curb cut, you could put, make it part of the special permit plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good point. So, we actually need to touch that.
I have a single-family home in a, in a rez fifteen, and I have two curb cuts, cause I have two driveways, one for each garage. And if I wanted to put a ADU in the back, I could get a third curb cut or use one of the driveways.
Right. And again, it would be by case-by-case basis. There might be some roads where it's, the sightlines are so good that it doesn't, it's not gonna hurt to have an extra curb cut.
If you're like me, living on a cul-de-sac, it doesn't really matter.
That's true.
Is there any new building codes written into this, or?
What was that?
Is there any new building codes written into these, that you know? Should I ask my Nelson?
I don't think so.
No, they haven't done that?
I know the state has had meetings with building officials, I, I haven't seen any documentation published regarding that yet.
So it's just following standard building code?
Right.
Yeah. So it has to comply with current building code.
Building code, fire code, title five.
Yeah.
Yep.
Two modes of egress, or whatever they call it.
No.
Gotta have smoke detectors, the whole nine yards.
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
Any more questions?
Nope. Good to see the state doing something, trying to help with.
So would you like to plan on coming back and getting the, the rest of the feedback that you need to finish your, your bylaw outline, or bylaw draft, or?
That's one option, or you can send me notes so that I can actually implement the changes, and so when I come back, I have a more refined.
What does the board think about putting this on as a recurring agenda item each month? And when we get to that point in the agenda, we can just talk about what we've learned, or what we've thought about.
It's only a couple of months left.
Right. Well, then for the couple of months that are left, we'll do that.
Yeah. So at least we're talking about it, so when she comes back, we can't, it's not like.
So let's, let's try to have it all done by November, so that, that gives her a month to wrap it up in December. Cause our, our meetings are usually the second Wednesday of each month.
Okay.
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 Check completion next meeting.
Yep. And if you have ideas or recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it in one month if we have anything.
I got a lot of questions.
If you want, if you wanna like, keep track, or whatever, we can just send them all into Brayden Clerk, right?
Yep.
That way.
Yeah, or just bring, bring them all here, typed out, and then we can give them copies, and just scan it and send it to her, or?
Well, it's easier, type it, just send it into our clerk. I don't like wasting paper in my house.
You have paperless? Hopefully not toilet paper.
Wife asked me to, they'd fax something for her. I said fax something, because that fax machine was like five years ago. It's like threw it out.
Well, thank you very, thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
Yeah, very nice presentation.
Thanks to you, and I'll get comments on the existing bylaws and figure out where we need to make amendments, so.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we're looking forward to seeing you again, Jay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, back to the agenda here. All right, now we're into standard business. Discussion status report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpont Estates. I know that's in the works, we might be seeing a as-built coming from Mr. Secara any time now. Sure, he'd be glad to wrap that one up.
Working on the last house, huh?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. Country View Estates Eisenhower Drive, nothing new there.
They got a bedroom right now.
There's something in the works.
I thought this was already.
Well, there's a couple of people that have come forward, I guess, and asked about the process.
I thought they had submitted it.
I have not heard that.
They got fifty-one percent to go along with it?
Probably. Fifty-one percent of the front.
Probably, yeah.
Right, they probably can do it. They just wanted some guidance, so they've been talking to the front office, and my understanding is that it's Highway Department, Sewer Department, and the front office is working on this.
Okay, good, well, that's good, we could maybe take one off the list.
Yeah, we'll see. Lions Estates, so I was on site with Jeff Walsh from Graves the day before the paving was done. They were doing the prep work, and everything looked good there. They were in the process of doing the cuts for the sidewalks at the driveways and that. And then my understanding is Mr. Clark went up there and looked at it, what was that?
He was paid, that was this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I drove up there two days ago.
Looked good?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only, the only thing I was kinda surprised, or, or actually shocked at, was the fact that there's a, in some cases, there's a pretty big step from the front yards down to the sidewalk. And I don't know how they're gonna, how they're gonna fix that.
I noticed that too, when they cut the grass out.
Yeah, there's, there's some places there that there's about a ten-inch step.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to bring the grade of the sidewalk up as it comes up to it, because of the ADA, ADA rules, compliance rules for.
Or put some kind of retention in, otherwise the people's front lawning is gonna be washing onto the sidewalk.
So, my understanding during our discussion with, with Jeff Walsh and the people on site there from the paving company, is that that was a case of whoever did the grading for those driveways.
No, no, I'm talking the front yard, the grass. There's a step from the sidewalk up to their front yard, like ten inches, eight to ten inches.
Right, but if you all, notice some of those driveways have the same problem, where they come down, when the, when the sidewalk's gonna come into them.
The drive, they, they put the sidewalk on either side of the driveways, the driveways were already there.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is the grade coming from the garage, of the driveway going down through the house, it, it should flatten out more when it gets near the road, and it didn't. So now you get a problem where the sidewalk comes in. So they're talking about figuring out a way, they, how did it look? Did they?
I was just looking at the road, I noticed that.
We'll have to see how, but I mean.
Paid more attention.
Graves is aware of it, so.
So the sidewalks are done, but like I said, in some cases, I, I noticed that there was like an eight to ten inch step in somebody's front yard, like you're gonna step off the, off the lawn, and step down eight to ten inches to get on the sidewalk.
The good news is, the residents that are living there seem to be happy. I'm not hearing, we're not getting any complaints in, and they are now, the gentleman who was here, and one of the other, our gentleman, they're like, acting as the appointment, so to speak, for the whole neighborhood. And they're in direct communication regularly with Mr. Kara Pannas from Galaxy and, and the engineer, so seems like right now, people are satisfied with the way things are going.
I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty near, it's gotta be pretty near completion, but.
Yeah, I know they're hoping. All right, Sophie's Way, we're here with that. Inspections and actions associated with site plans. Legacy Landing Country Club Acres, we have nothing new here, no changes. SEP Solar Oxford Ave. What the heck, what is left up there?
It was grass.
I thought that was done.
That's the Housing Authority's, is the grass on the?
That was grass for that one too.
Yeah, they were waiting for grass to grow. Grass is there. There are trees down there now. That's the one right by the.
The weight IPG.
Pro Auto Motor, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought that was done.
I mean, it'd be great if we could wrap that up and get it off the list, right?
Yeah, we could.
Was it, was there something about a fence there? Was there a problem with the fence?
Let's see, it was the height of the fence.
The height of the fence, and I think it's seven feet or something.
Yeah, but it wasn't a problem, cause.
Yeah, six feet wasn't in the mold.
Back, like where it was supposed to be.
Okay.
It was only like a five or six feet at the front there.
Six feet in the front.
Oh, okay.
Where it was supposed to be seven feet, it's seven feet, that's what I remember from.
It's something like that, it was a seven-foot.
Okay, all right. Stevens Mill, did Conservation meet tonight, or is that next?
I don't know, I'm talking about last week, they didn't have a DEP number.
They don't have a DEP number, right, but at least it's moving along. It's not, it's not the fault of the Stevens Mill people that they don't have a DEP number yet. Conservation just regularly, their policy is that if they don't have a DEP number, they, they table it to the next meeting, cause they can't act without a DEP number.
So there was a possibility of some action on this?
Well, they're going through Conservation to get some approval, to do some work. I don't know what the work is, I haven't seen the, the application, but that's the holdup right now, is the DEP file number. Once they get that, then Conservation will be able to act, and then if they issue order or conditions.
Did they ever buy that property next door?
Which one's that?
For their parking lot?
No, they were supposed to get, they had an agreement.
For the second exit.
They had an agreement.
To share the driveway.
Right, it was twenty-five thousand dollars or something, supposedly they had an agreement worked out. I don't know if that ever finalized or not, but that, that's, that's critical, they were gonna improve, improve the access.
Yeah, Tri Valley Elite here.
Yeah, Mill something or other is the, I think, the property owner.
Okay. Well, we've, we've got it in the.
That's just good news to hear that there's anything that happened, frankly.
Yeah, I mean, at the very least, they've gotta fix that roof before winter, can't go through another winter with that roof with just the tarp on it, I'm sure, but I'm sure they're aware of that. Solar project at the landfill.
Still there.
Still there.
Isn't that done yet? It looks done to me.
Yeah, done, well, to your point, Dudley Housing Authority.
What is that? This is the grass there.
This is, yeah, this is the grass.
But they just did some paving and sidewalk work over there.
Did they?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
A couple of weeks ago.
Oh, well, this.
I thought that they only did that part of dealership, the.
Yeah, they went, they came out by the dealership, and they, they paved and put in some sidewalk ramps and did some other work there, so I don't know if they, if they.
That's additional, we haven't got any information on that.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda foggy, cause it was a whole, I know they had a new director come in, and the director ended up sending us something that he believed was something that certified that everything had been completed, but it was like it was from their people. Certifying them, and we were like, well, no, you don't understand, it's, it doesn't matter that you think it's done, it's, our peer review has to decide that it's done.
And do we still have money for that?
No, I think that's how, that's.
Done?
Yeah, pretty sure.
All right.
But then we just have to build them, right?
Right.
Planner's plate, we don't have a planner, so there's nothing on the plate. Comments from the planning board? Anybody?
I did try to send something out, hopefully everybody got it. There was a Zoom event at CMR PC, and with regards to batteries, storage batteries.
Oh, I did see that.
Yeah, and a number of communities seemingly have a very big problem with this off-bridge being one. Apparently, we mentioned OCAM earlier, there's a, a big facility that's planned for OCAM, and one of the things that was pretty distressing was, the fire chief asked the so-called experts, what do we do if we have a fire? And essentially, he was told, let it burn, which he didn't feel was an acceptable answer, and was definitely of the opinion that smaller communities, the facilities to deal with these kinds of events, and the runoff that would be created in terms of where's that going, and what is it? It's just too many unknowns, and the resources are not in place, so the caution was there. Uxbridge apparently has, I think, six, three that are operational, and I think a couple more that are in the works.
What is this?
Storage batteries.
The battery banks that they use at the solar fields? Like, I guess they have large banks of batteries that are used to store the power during the off.
These are supposed to be in like self-contained, double-walled containers with.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're supposed to be, but like the end of the night, it's supposed to have fires in California.
If they catch fire, they're told to run.
Yeah, it's not, apparently.
Don't go near it.
It's.
Evacuate there.
I know you're on.
I just, I just saw a thing on the news today that, I forgot what town it was. These electric cars, when they catch on fire, they have a hard time putting them out.
Yeah.
This firefighter came up with an apparatus that you can attach to like a two-and-a-half inch hose, and you just slide it under the car, and it's like a giant lawn sprinkler, and you turn it on, and it just floods the car with water, because you can't get close to them.
Boy, that guy might wanna get a patent, cause apparently a way to get some money out of that, if, if that works.
They're actually selling them already.
Electric cars evil, solar bad. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a coal-fired car.
Steely steely.
They, they, in Second Ward, they actually had coal-fired, wood-fired, and we keep it going, but it was. But it was, it was kind of interesting in, in a sense that a lot of smaller communities that wouldn't expect apparently being affected by this, I'm thinking of OCAM specifically. And one of the big questions was, you know, if you're trying to put this fire out, you're putting water or chemicals on, what is that stuff and what is that stuff? That is going into the groundwater, into wells.
Minerals that good for you.
Oh, yeah, it's rare earth minerals that you can recycle to the Chinese, I suppose, if you're lucky enough of them.
There you go.
But, good luck.
Get cremated and send your ashes over to China.
Right, that's, it's PFOS on steroids.
Yeah. Anybody else? Anything? No? Comments from the audience? We don't have an audience, so I guess that's.
Well, we have Brady over here. We should acknowledge his arrival on scene.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly welcome.
You're gonna love it.
Well.
Other business, approve and set the next meeting date. So, uh, we've got August twenty-seventh, that'll be our placeholder meeting, and then like in nine hours, I get to decide.
Yeah.
If we have an A and R, is an M will cancel. So, but then our next regularly scheduled meeting that we all get together for is.
Is September.
September tenth. And then we have. Approval of consultant vouchers and payment of bills. So Aura reminded me that we probably, as a board, we wanna take action giving Braden the ability to sign vouchers like we did with our previous clerks. So, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we permit our new clerk, thank you, Braden, Braden Cutler. They have permission to sign vouchers as required, as, as in previous practice.
We have a motion, second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. All right, so that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve a voucher for one hundred eighty-one dollars and fifteen cents to go to Worcester Telegram Gazette for vacations of the planning board, uh, meeting.
What do you get?
The first one is one hundred eighty-one dollars and fifteen cents.
Yeah.
To Worcester Telegram, which goes under, I guess, New England Garnet. They're in the back of your book under invoices.
All right, I'm just, because on the, for some reason on the agenda, it says one hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents.
Oh. Well, it says payment by, payment amount by credit card, one eighty-one fifteen.
Uh, is this total cash amount too, or is one seventy-four?
Garnet, New England, invoice number zero 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 seven one seven nine two zero seven, amount one hundred seventy.
My credit card?
I'm thinking we're gonna pay.
My credit card is one eighty-one fifteen, apparently.
Pay by check?
Oh, we pay by check? Okay. Sorry.
So why is it, why is it more?
There's a discount.
Because they charge you probably two percent.
They don't want two percent, but a three percent.
All right, I'll, I'll amend my motion to one seventy-four twenty for, for New England Garnet, which is Worcester Telegram and Gazette advertisement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the payment to Graves Engineering for the total amount of two hundred seven dollars and fifty cents. This was for, um, can you say what it's for?
Sawmill Road Subdivision.
Okay, I'm just not seeing that on here.
I think it was.
Yes, it does say Sawmill Road Subdivision.
Yeah.
Two oh seven fifty.
Second. Chairman, if you have to abstain on that one.
All those in favor? Aye. Abstain. So just make a note that I abstained from the vote on that one. And then, we have another invoice.
Yeah.
For five thousand.
Five thousand dollars?
Five thou, yeah, that's the, that's the peer review for the cell tower project.
Oh, okay, so this is gonna come out of the, this is gonna come out of the.
Right, right.
Applicants.
Yeah, it's past due, so I'm thinking we should approve it even though it didn't make it to the agenda.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, uh, okay, the, the payment for the voucher of five thousand dollars for Isotope LLC.
Second.
In, in combination with the Diamond Cell Tower application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, other town notices? Other correspondence?
I will second Mr. Shinak's motion.
Okay. All right, we have the motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor?